Alright. There we go.
Well, that was loud. Uh. Your follower, the regular October Board meeting for Solvus and School Board Director. Was the mission of the Solvus and School Board. Every student has an opportunity to learn and then grow. Just need a follow all.
I can rock holes.
Here.
Paleska.
Here.
Coons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Uh, Ben Hatman.
Here.
Thank you. Wolf is absent.
Thank you. This is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everyone who's still at the tonight. Uh, everybody in the Solvus and School Board. Get ready for the dialogue of the whole school. Um. Qualifications.
Yeah, speaking of high school, we have volleyball, uh, technical district going on tonight. We have freshman football playing.
Perfect.
Fairness for now and then JD playing Waller.
Yep.
So back to back games there. Um, and we have, yeah, we have, yeah, band concert, middle school band concert, so it's a building down. Um, want to congratulate, um, the girls and boys got the ranking. And run up with the district, they're both qualifying for the state. And, um, would like to, um, celebrate an upcoming event, Musical, which Sammy is directing. Um, you already share a few.
Sure. Yeah, Grace, it's in two weeks, opening, we're opening on Saturday, November four. Yes, um, this is probably the farthest along we've been in the show, so kids are super excited, just like preparedness wise. Um, we still have, uh, you know, super special on Halloween, so they've been working super hard to show me that they don't have to have a full guest that day, so it's been good reading at my school, I guess that's important day. Um, so it's going really well, our goal is to at least sell out one show. So it's kind of the goal that they set, so tickets go and sell up a couple like Saturday.
And the shows are?
Saturday at two and seven, and Saturday at two.
And how many students are all engaged?
So this is smaller, you were just talking about, the smaller than we normally have, I think, goodness, probably sixty-five to seventy, usually they have over a hundred. They lost a lot of seniors last year, um, and then about two thirds were cast for seniors this year, so. Literally working on rebuilding that. Getting interested.
The other solvations for the board?
Yeah, we're, uh, in section five here, uh. I'm gonna make a motion to move, uh, five point two admin reports. To the spot, um, right before number nine, with their baseball items, so.
Okay, we just did that, uh. Second, second, most of what I lost the second by twos. Um, mainly the losses to make in the form of feeling after that, which is. Very long. All the years, we're behind on seven nine.
Bye.
Close. That takes us to. Focus on one of them.
Awesome. So I have Sammy and Megan here, they're gonna share a little bit about our Teach to Deal PD that we had. On Monday, again, remember the date, last week, thank you. Um, so it'll be the next slide for me. Danielle Tyce King, she is the, I guess, founder, you could say, of the Teach to Deal that we've really been working hard to help support. Social emotional learning for students, um, and behavior supports for students as well. Her key points as she came out, the, the big focus was our environment, the classroom environment that we create. Um, and how as managers of that space, um. We are thinking about purposely planning for setup and current turn arrangements, things like that. Um, she hit on the items that you see on the screen there, traffic patterns. Um, organization, the more organized typically, the calmer the classroom will be. Um, and also just helping students know that they have a belonging in that classroom. Um, and Sammy and Megan can kind of share how that shows up in their classroom arrangements and things. Um, she talked about using furniture to create compartments of learning spaces that are more defined. Um, and then thinking about visual lines from an aspect of a student. If I'm in the classroom, what visuals do I have available to me that either helps support what's expected of me? Or that may also distract me from what I should be working on? Um, and how those visuals help support, what is this space? For, what should I use focusing on in this area? Um, and that's where that visual cues piece comes in. Um, I asked Sammy and Megan to come in because. When we had that PD on Monday, it was all day. PD, the AM was our time with Danielle, and the PM was our time with Jenny, who was our math consultant. Um. And while many, if not all of our teachers went back and did some sort of application from that morning PD with Danielle. Um, these two just really knocked it out of the park, and I'm just gonna turn it over to them to share with you what they had to weigh in. How they applied it.
Um, so I pulled actually, uh, off Danielle's website, she says, she talked on the environment, she said staff must. Learn to utilize the environment itself as a form of instruction when traumatized children enter school spaces, they scan the environment looking for risk. Educators must be aware and responsive to the subtle cues that traumatized children teach us. We must also be aware of our impact on that and on the learning space. Um. So the work that we did with her really helped me to think more about, um, being intentional about furniture placement, she talked about how we as managers of the space. Oftentimes, um, kind of put ourselves like in the corner, or like side, or front of the room. Um, to make room for all the students in the middle, but she talked about how really like. If you were the manager of the space. If you could be centralized, it would be. A lot more impactful for our students. Um, because you're head closer to all of them, having more of an impact on them. Their learning, you're always visible to them as well. Um. And kind of send that message to them. Sammy and I both, um, put our, our game tables in the middle of the room, so I feel like, yeah, it's kind of like, uh, they're pretty much that similar, this is the same as classroom.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Yep. And we each also have kind of some nooks in our room, to help compartmentalize and thinking about that, um. Like home down corner, or some of the students to kind of de-escalate if needed. Um, using some of the, some of the. Skills we learned from Danielle, but also from our character strong. We remain using like our one, some things, so, um. Yeah, we also, when we talk about like, students having more of a. Um, inclusive, like, but your classroom or home belonging. Um, I know it's like you have pictures of like classes of yours or students. Yeah, so people, yeah, do you want to leave side? Uh, another thing I can relate to really big is, she has walk, do like gallery walk almost of all the rooms, and said, what was the first day you, you see me in that room? And most of us walked in, we're like, oh, it's your library, so for me, I made sure I have my affirmation station, like straight. Back on the wall that you can see it, and then I'm working on getting like a comfy like pillow or something, so that's like, that'll be my cool down or sometime area. And then I put my one book shelf there with our classes of family, and then I have like little pictures of all the classes I've had, that's all. Uh, and I'm adding like, as we go, so you know, like. That's what we're here for, so I mentioned that a little bit too. And here's I joke for you. This was before we were testing our.
Okay.
Three lumens. Not after the checkers. Ah, but it's like, I'm like, I have to. But, sorry, that was my main thing, because I love just being in the middle and just speak to it too, which like. The flow is nice, you're like close to everybody, maybe. And then I've also tried to tiered carpet spots, and it's just because, I mean, it's more prepared, they're, they, so. A little space, so we put some on the floor, and some he said, like, our tables, so you can just kind of see. They have more choice for that, as well, people who started them knows more in their space than ours does.
Good question.
Yeah.
Um. So with additions, you thought that we're doing, um. How do you think both now, like the, the furniture, like this is a little bit different, we did build this, um. And we could recommendations, right, from companies and teachers? How do you think, I mean, this was a number of years ago, this new. Kind of training concept, what's your opinion on the desk, and how we not being. I did right now.
I think we can probably speak, and probably what most of the teachers didn't say. Is, yeah, furniture pieces are tricky. They're really weird shapes. It's hard to get, like last year, I know we're both working that we had to combine classrooms, just because the teacher was that. Or material leave, and we barely had to fit.
Real.
Twenty-five to twenty-eight, it's a little bulky, and now it's many options, um. For like ways you can arrange your furniture, whereas students are in individual desks, and there's a lot more you can do with, um, that was something that we. He's a pair of these, it's impossible, but. Yeah, it looks really nice.
But it's very nice quality, furniture is quality.
Yeah.
I mean, so good, yeah, I guess, yes, it is different, everything can be shaped or structured a little different. And so there's creativity there, and so it's, it's interesting to hear your thoughts, because you're dealing with it every day. And you know what you want and how it fits in your act, so, yeah, I would say.
I would say we made it work, and it's, it's going fine, going well, but.
You'd prefer individual desks?
I definitely would prefer individual desks. I think, I'd say individual desks are more, um. Different seating types.
I think the flexible seating piece is really, really big, so if you look under that table, there's like. Oh, stool, items, I think underneath them there. Um, and then there's the other, you can't quite see, but I know Sammy's got some other, just like.
I think so, the next one, yeah. And I remember, I think we, well, you can't really tell. There's some items, I have some lovely stools I purchased with like the T L money, and, um, some, yeah, things I've made. But. Yeah, I think that would be a priority to make forward, is to probably flexing options, because it's a lot of our students who.
Is that what you're usually making of those spaces, when they have their, kind of reading time?
Like, you know, around the room, like, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, this is your time, then.
So I think everybody does it a little bit differently, I have a rotation in my classroom, and like, um, students who get to go. So they each gonna go about themselves, take it around the. Sit during that, and you have a different time, but.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. One thing, an idea that, um, the grade teachers brought up. Um, was to proceed, but actually was like. Maybe try and add that sense of belonging for our students, even about qualities, Danielle's watched a lot about trying to have pictures of our students. Working and celebrating their accomplishments. Uh, so we talked about trying to, what it's about, with pretty small word hallway, where we have like. Maybe even some learning stuff, like we run pro, and pictures of them working, um, celebrating their accomplishments, so that's a goal that we as a team got up to.
That's something we're working on for the fact too, so when those who get admitted S I S U C that. Next to the art room is where we have like the S I S. Board. Um. We are changing those pictures out, they have been shipped this week. Um, to be pictured of things teachers have sent to me, so that that section is really celebrating the classroom and the students. And when they walk in, right now, the pictures that are there are pictures of our staff and their families. Um, those will shift into the lounge, because that's an important thing for teachers too. Um, on the belonging and the just feeling and family and staff, but those pictures will shift into our, into our teacher's lounge. And the pictures that are currently there with our families and things will be. Picture of our students and classes and celebration, where we're like. If we had, I think, a day and things like that, that we were going through throughout the year. Um, because one thing that, I, I just, sometimes I don't even think about it from that lens, and Danielle's really good at helping us do that. Um, when she looked at our like entry area. With those staff photos and names, our thought was, we wanted to share more of ourselves. With our kids, with our students. Um, and kids love to look at those pieces, but she also pointed out that. For some students, that can be a trigger for them to be like, I don't. They care more about these people than me, or things like that, so, um. We want to be able to be more inclusive in that regard, so. Um, we've switched that out a little bit too, but she just really helped you start to think about like. How that might be perceived, even though the intentions are good.
So. And back to your table question. Um, I do like the tables, but I will say, in our storage room, all the triangle tables are there, no triangles. So we're trying to, by over the circle is starting, so that's a thought, if we're keeping tables, don't get the triangle tables, because they just, they only fit three kids, and they're huge. Makes it a lot of space, too much. But they're, they're trying. Yeah, there's a lot of those.
Yeah, I think the idea was when we. When they were ordered.
They would combine with others.
Yeah, well, you can take it. How can you fit them together? If you want to do the four or five, you can fit these, or if you want to pull them apart, you can add groups of. Two or whatever, so, yeah, we'll certainly.
I think, yeah.
Like, what shape worked the best, with the size of the room, and this thing, but, yeah.
Like Rex and Virgil.
Yeah.
Pretty well, but.
What, this, who would, like, you, all of you did the best, and those, you know, classes, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so, so real quick, they wanted knowing who's the best, it's like, everybody that I've. Let it out its face, and I was kind of like, oh, it's, uh, so. Yeah, it must be.
Yes.
Preparation. That absolutely still needs to be there, and. That's the component that you're seeing, like, the way those round tables are half. Not even the semi public, just comfy chairs, but they make us comfortable. Um, we want to keep that component to it. Um, but also having some options where we maybe only have a set of two here or there, because the other piece to be able to manage in the classroom is, I can't always have. A group of four, because it's just, they don't match all together, that makes sense, so.
I would be glad, what kind of they want through and. A lot of it, watching it seem really warm and kind of very, like, I mean, you know, it has to develop this, right, so. Yeah, I appreciate everything that. You guys are doing those, maybe help the kids.
Yeah.
Shake on it?
Yeah. So that that project will have to start, um, which gives us some time to where we've got, uh, no, no treaty service or that. Yeah, they're they're going to comment. We have where the building is going to set. Um, the addition is going to set. That's where kids do a lot of their, uh, grass type of things. Um, we're gonna have to move that playground brass area to the other side of the fire lane goes in the back, which we have some, you know, trees planted drought. We're gonna train plant those trees to open that area up wide for play at noon. So we'll get that done in the next couple of weeks. They're gonna come in and move those trees for us and and, um, so we don't lose out on 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 those trees. We'll plan and we've got some spot picked out at the high school. It's got a spot like you that we're training to plant those trees. Um, of the map, we are set to, uh, I just checked with Gladys, the project manager. They're finalizing bids for, uh, the concrete, um, at the transportation site and for the canopy. We have told them, no, for now, put them on hold as far as the interior. Because what they're estimating the interior is way astronomical in our eyes. Uh, so we just said, no, stop. We're gonna do a little more investigating on this and and digging into this a little bit more. We do want to get well on the others. So we'll we'll continue going to that. Um. Uh, and then, um, they're basically finalizing and we'll be, we're still on pace to get out the replacement of Gilford in November. And we're still planning on a memorial day start with a, uh, early to mid July finish. So. Who else? Consider agenda. I wasn't there to signify by say. Those are considering notice. Policies. We found that things from state that we pass a clear one of the new files. And when something is done, starts considering. Most of the second reading of the policies that it said, well, just the important thing is secondly. You got first things, man, this. Oh, sorry, I'm not gonna give it. The one out of the policy presented. What my feelings to do seven means of the policies this. Separate by office discussion. Even more of a simple, you got to change the files or something like that. So, um, it makes it a bit easier. Um. That was special. I would claim to signify by saying on. First being a board policy, seven oh five point one, six to the beginning, you know, I mean, seven oh five, oh, oh, five, two, three, four, two, three, you know. It was sort of. I shared you were, yes. So we are seven oh five point oh one. We have that policy in place. Um, the only change that I'm, um, would request is the current policy states that the superintendent shall have the authority to authorize purchases without prior board approval. Um, up to fifteen thousand dollars. And I'm requesting we raise that twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, we're running into a lot of problems with the technology, uh, fifteen thousand, which is very far.
We know this.
Like over years ago. We did it all six years ago. Yeah, yeah. Um. Twenty five is consistent with most schools that I checked with, uh, as I look at their policy. So it just gives a little bit more that we can go right, you know, get get things sorted without with the right to go that way. So other than that, that's the only change in seven five, seven oh five point oh one. The other two, the R one and R R two, we do not have those in place. Those are ISB policies and we are required to have those in place. Seven oh five, R one and R two, they just basically refer to seven oh five point one and break it down further in the more detail. But we're required to have those two adopted in order to get reimbursed for the safety grant. That's speculation. The two hundred thousand. Yeah, so we can, they have our grant right now. They're processing it. They said they can do forward with our brand, but when it comes time for reimbursement, those policies have to be in place. But I just.
Go ahead.
I was listening to, so I was like, oh, I don't know if the, the, what I want to see from our basically just receivers. Right. Things you go forward to get a loan or whatever you just kind of said, followers and the purchase of receivers and and now the state of business and if you want these items, if you want this, you gotta, your proceed has to sell out.
Yeah, so just walk me through this, just mainly so that everyone can hear. So what's the process from twenty five to fifty? Yep. And then what's the process over there?
Yep, so twenty five to fifty would be multiple bids. And then that comes to the board to approve all of it. And then over fifty is seen.
Yeah.
Like, like per school by spread.
What policy does this twenty five to fifty really? Could it only be the purchase prior to work through one? It becomes one for application.
Right.
That's the part I just wanted to make sure. You know, we saw.
Well, again, I know we've already done stuff with apps, especially when we have, you know, building stuff going on, we were constantly like, I mean, and it was all things out of it. And so, um, no, it's, I, I.
Well, I I call the industry to say, yeah, we trust you, you know, we believe this, but what is this due to us in the future? It's like everyone else is getting much of forty five dollars, we're behind. So, I mean, especially knowing into a building process where you, you know, we can't waste for a mortgage or you know, we can't always have special mortgages all the time for approved stuff. I think that is, makes sense to do. Not that I'm actually appreciating that. Right. It's possible. Right, for sure.
So I'll be looking to, uh, approve the pretty good board policy, seven oh five, drop one. And then along that all the way out to the purchasing bid process.
Second.
Okay, my last is second and last.
Just the discussion that in the future, I'm just looking at that fifty thousand dollar, um, RFP bid. It seems as though we would not want to require a set fifty thousand dollar mark to have to go out for bid that we should probably in the future. That that seems so low to require that competitive bid. Seems like something maybe in the hundred thousand might be more up our alley, given the district of our size. So as a second reading is something that, for in the future.
Policy. When I need more data.
Yeah, that would be more helpful. Yeah.
This is the first time in, like.
Right.
Oh, it's hoping it's better. I don't care.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, like if we want to go out and buy a new curriculum or some sort of software.
Yeah.
We don't want to have to go out for bid for some of those.
For sure. So it'll just give you. It was to make that.
Yeah.
Uh, next up on the agenda is. Lack of ownership. So what I think, what I think is, uh, I think after condition, whether it was about like, kind of five, we need to add two more caries. And so, uh, it's like, okay, the list.
Well, just, uh, just clar, I mean, I'll just clarify, it's actually replacing a couple of folks who actually, after we approved. So, um, and if it's something we want to continue to to add, I can certainly continue to ask people, but just trying to find. We had a, yeah, again, a couple of people said, hey, I don't, I don't want to continue on this this year. So I found, and again, trying to balance females versus males, think, um, still maybe a little out of whack in that regards, if that's something if we want to continue to do, but.
Do you? Thanks for finding those.
Yeah. Well, that's true. Recruit a couple. Yeah, still, yeah. Some of the challenges have been not all dads want want to attend some of those things, so. I thought of him, but I haven't talked to him yet.
Three times a year.
Something you want to do. Yeah.
Always motion was too excited, ownership for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, two. Okay, and in my end of report, I'll go ahead and touch upon, if you don't mind, uh, the, uh, process of appointing team board representative. Um, so this is just a quick summary. Enrollment history is the first one. If you flip to the second page, I had Pat hook these together. We're actually going to be down at eight point five students here. So you can see enrollment history, she has a graph and then numbers on the top left corner. Four point three, but, um, forty five students coming in, open enrollment and forty five point eight going out. Now I know, uh, prior to, uh, having the, um, sufficient parking space guidelines of open enrollment. People might arrive, we had about a hundred and thirty coming in, one seventy five, okay, one, one seventy five, yeah, fifteen. And and twenty nine going going out. So as these classes graduate out, I mean, that number just changed dramatically. Always speaking of, I was going to just say. Um, I believe so, uh, it would be seventh grader.
Seventh grade on this.
Seventh grade on, seventh grade on.
Is this? Keep fixating on that preschool number. Does it count preschool?
Five years old.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And we read on there, uh.
Eighty, which, what, what, for preschool?
Preschool.
Yeah, I think we're like eighty eight, eighty nine, something.
I just have that much.
Because.
Blown away by that.
Eighty something, yeah.
And then, and then the bottom one just reflects our certifying them. So the year before we were up twenty one, now we're down to. Uh, the challenge, this challenge next year will be, we'll graduate the, uh, uh, class of a hundred and forty five, uh, uh, of large class. So, you know, you graduate one forty five, we'll probably bring in kindergarten classes around one ten, one fifteen, one twenty. So we'll start, you know, we'll start right there after graduation, we're down to twenty. But yeah, education is, we'll, we'll have them again and things like that. It's realistic, so we're really constructionally is on the big relatively, yeah, yeah. So that's just a quick summary of what we are doing here. Um, next item is the student representative. We go to the last page, the third page. That's actually a letter that went out to the class of twenty twenty five. And it just lays out, um, student eligibility for the board. And then, uh, what their duties, uh, what their duties are. So, uh, those that are have interest, uh, they, um, got a signature form from Zach, uh, and it laid out, you know, twenty five students, high school, and so I just signed it. Two staff members, two community members. And then I believe they, with their signature page, had to submit a letter of application or a letter of interest with that. Um, of course, they, for eligibility, you have to be dismembered, things like that, become all that stuff. And then they will actually interview with the board team, uh, president, vice president, board secretary, superintendent.
We're looking to do that before November, but. Yeah, I guess before I leave.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe the first, second and third. So and we, we have three interesting individuals right now at this time. And then the final note was just, um, the safety grant, and you can see, um, we, we are, we can see up to fifty thousand dollars for building. Um, I had Sean go ahead and put all of our needs down. Uh, and this is based upon the vulnerability assessment, like Johnson County Sheriff's Department and the and the emergency, uh, emergency management team conducted assessments of each of our buildings. In August, they walked through a mall with principals and Brian Huntress, uh, and then wrote up a report and completed a form, uh, from home line of security. Um, that the the recommendations are reflected in this scary enhancement. And if we are going to do all that we we want to do, uh, those are going to be the prices. Um, we're only receiving fifty thousand dollars, uh, in, uh, reimbursement. But we thought, for instance, you know, like at, uh, the intermediate school, uh, we, we can just, we will shut change doors and use, use our, our, our bonds since, you know, we're already nearly a half below, uh, the original estimate on that.
Like what we.
I comment, yeah, like you also, that little, that, yeah, the extra thirty thousand dollars, uh, we'll find a, you know, find a way to, um.
Does that fifty thousand in school or total?
Fifty, fifty school. A hundred, two hundred thousand dollars that can be reimbursed.
And I mean, just having the, uh, this one's for a lot of that. This character is the one that goes for it.
Yeah. Yes. Yes. Rumor stores have a lot of followed up with that. Yeah, yep. So, um, you know, I, I was always seen first, it's a good thing we're, we have a legal policy in our, in our school because, you know, we kept getting take back. I mean, uh, we were too deep with it in our budget of ours. They wanted that detail. Yeah, I mean, John used to, you know, every, you know, the scripter and this is for the equipment, this is the insulation ball, I mean, this is the cabling, this is, we're, so we had to start kicking back again. Yeah, so then we're on, but we, we finally got it passed through its exhibition now and, and then, uh, we, we'll just wait. There, there, this is about three month backlog, so. Or the final approval.
Remind me on the timing again on this.
Well, it's, we're gonna probably coincide it, uh, uh, if we, in the next three months, we get approval, then we'll start it in the spring. It's gonna coincide it. We can go ahead and do all that we need to do at late view because of going into fear with the upcoming construction. And we'll be.
When will we get there? For what?
Well, we're hoping three to four months. They just said, you know, they've, we've got kind of a backlog that we've had.
Yeah, exactly. You said about it. He's really close to money, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, just, I wonder if you talk about, I think it's, it's, I think it's about that point, so. You want to change, pretty good about this, uh, you can go to the post session, you know, safety part, she's, it's a nine, anyway. Uh, so it's not easy, but. Safety reasons, yeah, uh, we, we just wanted to remember, we've done that, I want to, we want to try and do that. Again, the Johnson County Sheriff's Department's safety review, we want to try and do it here. Do a close session, put that in, it'll be where we're going and. And now, and if we just walk through that, it's only that, you know, things not that we had all set up and see wrapped in a question, closest question to you, you know. You have a general idea where to trust the administration, if things are in process, but sometimes it's like people saying, I'll be doctor and you see like, oh, we can't tell you what's in it. Um, it's not when it's detailed or any, this, this project on the house, so. I bet that's important, it's about the board, you're doing it, so we'll, we should just. I'd be able to, yeah. Thank you. Yeah. We're back three days. Over that last, usually have, you know, over, um, the sheriff's department is going on or adding. So maybe after that, uh, yeah. Well, it was funny, I think, uh, I did not do this, it was, uh, for the, yeah, I don't think so, but. We got, we got workshop, it's, it could be, we, we, yeah, it's very important, you just have to like, like, you know, before the fourth comes around, you'll wonder, I'll be, post Saturday, fourth, but, um, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of easy to even go in if there's something that's, uh, this evening, we told you once a year, so you're trying to make sure that they do it. They were all there and everything spreads, keep them out. That's what I said. Any other questions on the safety side? Here we go. Last thing we have on, we already talked about, any questions on, uh, who are board, uh, represented? Point, you know, even though in there is get, is timeline, we want to do that, go with the company after the, that week, I am. Uh, the policy says we don't have to start a board so you can, you can choose more than the elements of, uh, kind of, process goes and, um, we will, we'll go through that, uh, control and your outlets, that, this is, this is complete. Uh, this is another, the, uh, they will separate training and the background and, uh, officially, because they're very worried, uh, when they use, then, like, when they send it, so. Did you think the name that it, that thing sounded? Yeah, on your door, right on your.
Okay, uh, I have, we have to mention you guys. Chris?
So I have rooms for you guys to prepare for then. I have room for everybody right now. I can always change them. If that doesn't work out, and I also have you all registered for the convention. For that Thursday, you guys go down, you see my sign, that's where the hotel is, right across from the convention center. You hopefully won't be able to go because you'll be playing, um, and I have not registered yet, depending on who's chosen and if they can go or not, I'll bring them down to the list.
And then I'm the, am I the person?
Yes, and I assumed you were going to go down that morning. I did not get you a second night room, but I put if you wanted to. And if you'd like to take the car, you're welcome, and then I'll take it.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Get some top track all you want.
You're on, yes.
Yeah. I'll see if Jenny was still with you.
Yeah. Yeah, but the most important, maybe, could be, uh, could be, just have a.
Figure it out.
Not going to what? Um, we're going, we didn't have anything responding to the board, the pastor, we're going, even more learning and.
And we all have achieved our points, so I appreciate all of the efforts and the things that you guys listened to and learned and did together, yeah.
Okay, um, talking points. Ben? You want to go first or you want to go last? Um. Ben, you want to pay with your talking, but also care to celebrate.
Yeah.
As we said, we want to get our wish, uh, uh, it's really. You want, you want to share what happened to you in this last week, so. But we're seeing more of this celebration.
I meant to do, uh, know that this is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Duke is in Carolina.
Yeah.
The Duke.
I hope you see your face painted very fast.
I don't, not do. If you lost playing volleyball, uh.
Your relations.
You guys always.
Yes.
So, uh, Adam, you also talk on, uh, talking about, like, yeah, I, uh, I thought it was, we did, um, post somewhere, I think, with, uh, that's a different kind of idea of being thrown out, like we come to a classroom, how they using that space and what it keeps going there, so. Um, yeah, I guess we never really think about that, but it's good going forward with new construction. I get more people's info, so I appreciate those guys kind of tackling that and being able to use, uh, you know. Cassie?
Um, I think a couple of things for the meeting. Um, I've always liked data, so I'm, I'm interested in intriguing and learning more about how this data correlates together. Um, but I also, uh, appreciative to some of the feedback that I provided in terms of finding our next student representative on the board, and I appreciate, um, bringing that to heart and putting some more rigor around that process.
Yeah. Yeah, just. Sort of, uh, but also talking about having, I'm gonna say it was a piece of penis.
Nice.
Thanks, there you go, great call. Um, just having her, you know, I know it's, it's, every time she's come, it's been very impactful for our teachers. Still talks about the first video she showed, you know, the people that cry. But just, you know, some of those things, you provide the parties for our kids and realize that there's stuff I would use that way. Or as teachers that isn't inspirational, it's, you know, reaching them and eating them more than all of them. Start to fill the classroom, where it feels safe, you know, be, uh, where we don't not teacher focused. And not that we did that on purpose. I have the teachers' families out there, but really for a kid. It doesn't, you know, for teachers, it means a lot, but for kids, you know, we're switching that focus to them. Not, you know, we think, but you know, I think that's, so I think that's, uh, and then, does she do, how many times does she help?
No, it's, no, she's been here five, six times. Some of those times have just been to be in the buildings and just to observe. And to walk and talk with administrators, and she sucked Davidson a couple of times, and Davis sucked her back into another conversation, so it's been, it's been good.
Go long cross country and volleyball, all ring pop. Uh, and, uh, yeah. The whole, the, the place, I'm not, recent popular, yeah, you know, I think that would be much for. And, and are the times different issue?
Because football. They don't have it on Saturday.
Right, oh, yeah, we got two on.
Yeah, the last couple of years, we've all moved it at two shows on Saturday because of playoffs.
For the kids on that Saturday.
Yeah, it's busy.
Yeah. We used to play this after Sunday block, and then we could go two on Saturday, you know, we'd want it Thursday, then.
That football team wasn't so successful.
I'd like to say it's. Yeah, that's true. Not a rest. Hey, last thoughts, Ben?
Sided, boys and sports bar, but it's nice.
Yeah. All right, motion to Joe. Don't you know, during.
Second.
Don't you, it's kind of second, hold the baby to the back of the smile.
Bye.